Meeting for Tuesday, October the 12th, 2021. Planning Commission meeting today will take part in two sections, four to five thirty and seven to eleven P. M. My, my. Present for the staff are Kim Cole, Christie Sabdo, Jennifer Cleary.
Yeah.
And a new person.
Erica Barrera.
What was your name?
Erica Barrera.
Erica Barrera, okay. And for the commission, Mike Dawson, Carrie Latassa, Dan Fletcher in person. And then remotely, Mike Grassfield, Hansen Reed, and Stephen Millet. So we have one hundred percent. Let's begin the meeting with a review of the minutes from September the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
I'm sorry to interrupt here just because of protocol with the hybrid meetings. We do need to go through a verbal roll call and the commissioners online will need to verbally indicate they're here.
Okay.
Thank you, and I'm just gonna start recording, so.
Recording in progress.
Announcement there, that's just for our local copy. For the roll call, we have Chair Freeman, Chair Vice Chair Reed. Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Krishner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
Krishner Millet.
Here.
You, you're correct, we are all present. And if you don't mind, Chair, I would like to introduce how online viewers can participate to provide public comment. We do encourage members of the public to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a ten second delay and Comcast Channel twenty-five with up to a ninety second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the meeting from a, to join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone using, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight eight six four toll free. Once again, eight three three five six eight 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 six four. Then enter the webinar ID. If the first number does not work for you, please try another listed on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. The webinar ID for this meeting is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. Once again, one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There is a three minute, three minute time limit for today's meeting, so. And thank you, back to you, Chair.
All right. The consent agenda tonight are the minutes from September the fourteenth. Is there any member of the commission or committee or would like to discuss?
I move to approve as submitted.
Second.
All right. I would like to say one thing about the minutes. It was obvious in the discussion of the A D U issue that there could be some problem areas that could be anticipated since people are going for administrative approval. And the two areas were the Mills Act homes and the second area was in height over sixteen feet. Is it not possible to put on the applications, some boxes to check off? Do you have a Mills Act home? Are you asking for more than sixteen feet? You know, simply to anticipate those areas of potential conflict. Just a thought on the minutes. Anyway, we have motion to approve the minutes and a second. Shall we call for the vote?
Sorry, I'm typing, thank you. I currently do not see any hands raised in the Zoom and there are currently no public viewers. And so for the vote, we have Chair Freeman approve, Vice Chair Reed.
Approved.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
I abstain. I wasn't here.
Got it, thank you. And Commissioner Millet.
Hi.
Great, these minutes are approved as submitted with a vote of six.
And one extension.
Yes, and one extension.
All right. Next item on our meeting agenda is public comments for items not on the agenda. And I don't see anybody here in the council chamber. Is there anyone, Jennifer, who's phoned in, wants to talk on something not on the agenda?
No hands are raised currently, so I will just take this time to remind the public to join by telephone, dial star, oh, sorry, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four. Once again, eight three three five six eight 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 six four. Then enter the webinar ID, which is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. One more time, one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. You can also join via Zoom Gov at the link on iSearchMonterey.org on this meeting's agenda. Currently, still no hands are raised, so I think we can move on.
All right. The first regular item on the agenda is to consider four seventy-nine Pacific Street a use permit application, U. P. Twenty-one zero one two two for a massage establishment. The applicant is Waduan Jung. The owner is Peter J. Coniglio. And the zoning district is P. C. dash D, commercial general plan designation. Let's begin with the staff report. Thank you, Christie.
Thank you, Chair Freeman and Commissioner. My name is Christie Sabdo, Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. And the, the application is four seventy-nine Pacific Street. It's a use permit for a massage establishment. And the existing use currently is a law office and it's in a commercial building in Suite One. The general plan land use is commercial and the zoning is planned community downtown specific plan located in between Pacific and Caye Principale. The downtown specific plan requires a use permit for massage establishments. Ocean side massage, the proposed massage use will be offering massage therapy, including body and foot massages. The hours are proposed at nine A. M. and peach nine P. M., Monday through Sunday. The owner plus two certified massage therapists will be on site. Employees would park in the nearby parking garage. And the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District confirmed that water is available. So I'm going to go through the findings for a use permit. The proposed use is in accord with the objectives of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zone. The zone planned community downtown specific plan allows for a full range of commercial uses, including massage establishments, which are permitted with a conditional use permit. The proposed project will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood of such use and will not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity or the general welfare of the city. And the business owner and all massage therapists are licensed by the California Massage Therapy Council. There will be no impacts to the neighborhood. The downtown specific plan does not have a minimum parking standard for commercial uses. And employees would park in the public parking garages downtown. And the proposed use will comply with any specific condition as listed in the conditions of approval. We have a few special conditions of approval that massages won't be performed until the ten day appeal period has concluded and until the massage business owner appears and maintains a separate massage establishment permit through the police department. And number two, that the allowable hours of operation shall be nine A. M. to nine P. M., Monday through Sunday. And three, that any new signage requires review and approval through the planning office prior to installation. And then there are the standard conditions of approval. Staff recommends approval of the use permit for a massage establishment at four seventy-nine Pacific Street. Staff is available for questions and my understanding is the applicant is in attendance or is planning to be.
All right. Questions for Christie?
Well, I guess I do have one question. The, so the typical noticing for a project like this is, is a little card posted outside of the business address or something?
Yes, we post onsite and we mail notices to neighbors within three hundred feet of the proposed use.
Okay, so any other tenants in the building would also.
Correct.
Be able to see that. That's all, thanks.
Sure.
Are there other tenants in the building?
There are, this is Suite One, so I'm not sure actually how many suites there are. But there are other uses in the building.
Okay. Any other questions? Zoomers? Okay. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
The applicant online, do you know, do you see any callers or?
I believe the applicant for this is Hauduan Singh. And I can give them permission to speak right, right now. And I'm asking to unmute.
Hello.
Hi there, welcome.
Hey. Uh, sorry, hold on one second.
Oh, hi, I'm his interpreter, so does he need a presentation also?
No, not necessarily. If he wants to say something about the application, great. And if he doesn't want to say something, that's okay too.
No.
Oh, so, yeah, I think Christie pretty much covered all. And be free to answer any questions. Thank you.
There be any questions for Mr. Jung? Okay. Um. Public comment. Jennifer, you wanna lead that?
Sure do. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four toll free. Once again, eight three three five six eight 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 six four. Then enter the webinar ID, which for this meeting is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. Once again, this meeting's webinar ID is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. And currently, we do not have any hands raised and we still have no live audience members. Okay. So I think we can move on.
All right, well, then we'll close public comment. I had one question. It says no massages shall be performed at the subject site until the ten day appeal period has concluded. Are they already occupying the site?
No, excuse me. No, it's just a condition we wanted to place on there to be sure that they didn't start right away. We would put that on future applications as well.
Okay. All right, public comment is closed. Commissioner comments, any comments from?
No, I think it's fairly straightforward and this part of the use permit.
Yes, I agree. It's, it seems like a very straightforward application and I support the project.
Mike?
It seems to me that all the boxes have been checked and that this is a, this is a well thought out for you to go.
Okay. Mike Grassfield?
Yeah, excuse me, I do have a question probably for Kim. In the history of the city, there have been changes in the types of businesses and the numbers of those kind. As an example, gas stations, we see fewer gas stations in the city of Monterey than we had in the past. So on, on this type of a business, and I appreciate that there's a, a different prong approach to dealing with massage parlors, but is the number higher than in the past or lower?
I would just say slightly higher where, I think we've processed about one per year the last few years. So it's not substantial, but we do see about, I would say, at least one new massage establishment per year. And sometimes they're not replacement massage establishments, they're actually, like this business, a new, a new massage business. I think the last one Fernanda presented a year ago on, was it Dormity Court?
Yeah.
I think was one. I'm seeing about one per year.
Thank you, answer my question, appreciate it.
Hansen?
So I don't really have any super comments at all. I think before, I mean, this was a specific thing in this, the downtown specific plan to go through this process because of the large number of foot massage places popping up all over the place. And, you know, I guess to go through the process and, and do this, I, you know, I'm, I am. Do we need another one? I don't know. But all the boxes are checked and everything else is, is there. But I, you know, this is for us, you know, if, I guess, if we don't critically look at this, then why even have it be go through this process? So that, that's my only comment, so.
Well, I, I guess the, the answer to that is that the, this gives neighbors an opportunity to weigh in if, if they feel like it's gonna impact their property.
Quite well taken, quite well taken.
Nice.
Yes, Kim.
So on occasion, it is necessary through our police department to enforce on these establishments. In fact, one happened fairly recently, so we also like to have the use permit control when things start to go awry at specific facilities.
Okay.
Kim, the, the question is though then on, what's the mechanism? Is it, do they just revoke the use permit? If there's something that goes wrong or what is the, what's the, the step? I mean, is it like a bar that, do you have to declare a public nuisance and then go through that process or is?
Can I answer that? Can I answer that?
Ahead.
Heard here from staff.
Okay.
And we have a two-pronged process. The police department issues a permit regarding licensure of the therapist. And if there's issues regarding that and safety. And then we also have the ability, if that continues to be a problem, that we can revoke the use permit. So we have two approaches to be able to handle situations. Usually, most recently, the first approach is solve the issue. We have unlicensed professionals working in the business.
And the last, it doesn't come back to us, it goes to the appeals hearing board if, if the applicant doesn't agree with the revocation.
Thank you, Stephen. Did you have a comment on this one also, Stephen?
Well, they've, looks like he's checked all the boxes and is legally entitled to it. So I'm in favor of granting the, the application.
One other box that's been checked just by having it brought here is that, to my knowledge, and Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, there is a prohibition on personal services unless it's grandfathered in on Alvarado Street. And so by bringing it to the hearing, you're confirming that it's not on Alvarado Street and not in a corridor where that, that type of thing is unwanted in downtown. Is there a motion to approve?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve of the use permit for a massage establishment at four seventy-nine Pacific Street with all the conditions attached to the staff report.
I'll second that.
Any discussion of the motion? All right, call for the vote, Jennifer?
Definitely, First Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Hi.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Millet.
Yes.
Thank you. This motion passes unanimously and it is appealable to the planning office within ten days.
So congratulations on your approval. And Jennifer said there's a ten day appeal period to the planning office. That concludes the regular agenda for the afternoon session. Is there any other comment that you'd like to make, either Christie or Kim, as we head into the evening session?
I have a brief comment. I think we received two letters on the project this evening about twenty minutes ago. And then Jennifer, right before the meeting, said five minutes ago, we received another letter. So we'll go back and upload that to submitted comments. I don't think it's really any new information. It's sort of similar to some of the comments received today. But I encourage you, since you have a little bit more time, maybe you wanna just pull those up at home and look at submitted comments. And what we did do is since the last meeting, we've been uploading information to submitted comments, but a lot of that information was received about a month ago. And then we received, it sounds like, three letters today or three new pieces of information today dating back about a half hour ago. So we're doing our best to upload our comments.
Okay, then. There are no other announcements or comments?
I do have, I do have a question and actually it's for Hansen. He at the last meeting on this topic asked if the staff would give us a briefing on a couple of sections. Did they meet your satisfaction in the written material?
Yeah, we can talk about that, yeah, I mean, no, fine, so, yeah.
Thank, thank you, that's all I needed, thanks, appreciate it.
All right, with that, this afternoon session is adjourned.
Yeah, we could talk about that. Yeah, I mean, it was fine. So, yeah.
Thank, thank you. That's all I needed. Thanks. Appreciate it.
All right, with that, this afternoon session is adjourned.
Session, the October 12th, 2021, meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Monterey. We have city staff present, Kim Cole, the director, Jennifer Cleary, the administrative recorder, Erica, a new person, and Chris Schmidt, the city planner who is presenting the project.
Is there a reason that it's so quiet?
It's so quiet here.
Sandy, is your microphone on?
It is on.
Yeah, I hear it.
I hear it fine. It's fine.
Okay.
Volume must not be up.
Recording in progress.
Did we hear that?
Okay, I just put it in my mouth. I think I'm... Jennifer, do you want to call a roll for the commissioners, please?
Yes, Chair, I do. First, we have you, Chair Freeman.
Present.
Vice Chair Reed.
Present.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson. Commissioner Dawson, could you please confirm if you're here? Commissioner Dawson, can you hear me?
His, for whatever reason, his mic is off. It's, or his speaker's off. He can't, he's just trying.
Oh, we have a volume issue.
Yes.
You can see that he's here.
Yes, I can see visually he is here.
Who's next?
We also have Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa. And Commissioner Millich.
Here.
Seems Commissioner Latassa is absent, and if he arrives to the meeting, I will record the time arrival, time of arrival in the minutes. So we can move on with six commissioners present.
All right, since there is no consent agenda and there is only one item on the regular agenda tonight, why don't you, Jennifer, go through the call-in procedures before we open for public comment?
I would love to. Thank you. Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This is, this meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10-second delay, and Comcast Channel 25 with up to a 90-second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isarchemonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864, toll-free, once again, 833-568-8864. Then enter the webinar ID. If the first number does not work, there are more listed on the meeting agenda, again, posted at isarchemonterey.org. You'll also need a meeting webinar ID for this meeting, which is 161-990-8039. Once again, 161-990-8039 is this meeting's webinar ID. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeeting. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide public comments by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand, then *6 to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with this broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised, and there is a three-minute time limit for today's meeting, so please stay within that three-limit time. Thank you. Currently, there are no Zoom attendees. I will ask the public if anyone wants to comment down on items not on the agenda at this time.
Sandy, just, this is Hudson, just one quick question. I didn't hear the record button come on and ask us. Was that supposed to?
We, I am recording.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that that went, because I didn't, this session didn't ask, and we didn't have to click it on anything, so.
Oh, sorry about that. I'm not sure why you didn't get the notice, but I'm looking at it right now and I'm recording. And just a reminder, that's a local copy of our recording. It is also airing live on Zoom and Comcast Channel 25. Thank you for checking.
All right, since we apparently don't have any public comments for items not on the agenda, the agenda item that we're hearing tonight is Consider 2101, North Fremont Street. the agenda item that we're hearing tonight is Consider Two One-O-One, North Fremont Street, Adoption of a Mitigated Negative Declaration and Approval of Use Permit, U.P. twenty-zero-two-two-seven, to redevelop an existing eighteen-room hotel, restaurant, and parking lot site with a new forty-two-room hotel and parking lot and off-street loading space. The applicant is Adriana Cook, Era Studio Architects. The owner is Lakshmi Hotel Partners, Inc., Visitor Accommodation Facility Zoning District, Commercial General Plan, Land Use Designation. And before we go to the staff presentation, I have a question for clarification, and it may be my own lack of experience, but it appears as though there are two resolutions. One is for the mitigated negative declaration, and one is for the use permit.
That is accurate.
Okay. Let's begin with a staff presentation. Chris.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Chris Schmidt. I'm a Senior Associate Planner with the City of Monterey, and I've been working with the applicant on this project. So moving right into it, so staff's recommendation is to adopt the two resolutions mentioned by the chair, one certifying the mitigated negative declaration, the environmental review document, and the second would approve the use permit to allow the redevelopment of the existing eighteen-room hotel, restaurant, and parking lot with a new forty-two-room hotel parking lot and off-street loading space. Since there's been a little bit of time since, since we've looked at this project, I'm just going to go over some of the background information that was initially presented to the commission. So again, this is the demolition of the existing eighteen-room hotel and restaurant.
Chris, this is Hansen. Can you share your screen?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought that it was already shared.
It's on the council screen, but it's not, it's not on the Zoom screen. There you go. Thanks.
Thanks, Hansen.
That's better. That's readable.
Okay. Yeah, so where was I? So, so the demolition of the existing hotel, the Casa Verde Inn, and the Caruso's Corner Restaurant to make way for the construction of a four-story, forty-two-guest-room branded hotel with a forty-two-stage parking lot and one loading space. And just a reminder, this project was approved by the Airport Land Use Committee, who found that there was consistency with the compatibility plan. Just a bit more background information. So staff did attend and conduct a series of community feedback meetings with members of the community around this area. On February seventeenth, we met with the North Fremont Business District to present the project, and solicited comments. March eighth, we helped, we hosted a community outreach meeting and invited the business district and the various neighborhood associations and anybody, this was advertised on the city's website as well. And then on March twenty-fourth, we did attend the Villadellmani Neighborhood Association meeting. And generally throughout these meetings, the comments were similar. There was, there were comments about the project parking, the design or aesthetics, sidewalks, pedestrian and bicycle safety, as well as the potential for employee housing. So here's the project site, it's zoned VAF. That's the Visitor Accommodation Facility Zone, which is reserved for hotels and other types, you know, visitors serving overnight uses. The general plan designation is commercial, and it contains the existing eighteen-guest-room hotel and restaurants. And.
Restaurant has how many seats?
One hundred and thirty-four seats.
Thank you.
Good question. Here is a Google Street View image. This is from the other side of North Fremont Street of the project's site. And then, just as a reminder for the commission and the community, I wanted to show the renderings that, that the applicant provided. And I do have floor plans, elevations, et cetera, on some later slides if the commission so wishes to see them, but the renderings are what we will show for now. So here's the view from the rear along Casa Verde. A view from the east side from North Fremont. Again, this is kind of towards the east, looking onto the North Fremont parking lot entrance. This is, this would be a view from the neighboring lots to the north, which contains an existing multifamily building. And then a view from the Casa Verde parking lot entrance. Now, when this, when this project was previously presented to the commission, there were a number of comments and requested information from the commission, starting with clarification on the improvements along the north and east perimeter line, specifically the retaining walls, clarification on whether any sort of landscaping could be added to the project. The commission desired more understanding of the north side planting easement as the applicant had designed parking in the easement space. And then, one of the commissioners requested some more information about the VAF zone and the charter and its relation to the review of this project and the North Fremont specific plan. So addressing the perimeter improvements, this, these sections are also in your staff report. They show the various sizes of the retaining wall along the north and east property lines, which range from about one foot to five feet for the retaining wall, and then have a seven-foot wall above. And that's a screening wall that the applicant later put in after recognizing there's a requirement for a screening wall in the city's zoning ordinance. And then, addressing the easement and landscaping, so you will see that the applicant has moved all of the parking on the north side completely out of that landscape easement. They were able to do this by actually making the building a bit smaller and shifting all of the parking five feet to the south. And then they did also add about six hundred and fifty square feet of landscape area, as you can see, highlighted with the red boxes there. Now, so this, this is a couple of bullet points in response to Commissioner Reed's question about the VAF zone, the charter, and specific plan. It's certainly more detailed in the staff report, but, you know, starting with, with the first bullet point, in nineteen eighty-six, the council adopted a resolution which submitted the first VAF zone charter amendment to the electorate, which passed sixty-one percent in favor. The, the state basically allows a process for amendments or repeals to charters, and those could be proposed by initiative or by the governing body. In this case, it was the city council. And again, in nineteen eighty-six, the charter amendment significantly limited hotels to the existing sites, which were developed with hotels, and provided predictability with development standards. So new development standards were selected for the VAF zone. Moving forward to twenty fourteen, the council did adopt the North Fremont specific plan, and the record shows that they knew that a charter amendment via voter approval would be necessary in order to apply the specific plan policies to VAF zone sites. So moving on to public comments, a number of public comments have come up from this project through about four different parties. And the primary comments had to do with potential impacts due to noise, height and aesthetics, applicability of the specific plan versus the VAF zone development standards and charter standards, story poles and noticing, and parking and loading spaces. So starting with noise, the neighbors to the north who owned the multifamily building had concern for potential project noise impacts. They did provide a noise study that ultimately requested a more detailed noise report be prepared. So the applicant did go ahead and have one prepared. And that report analyzed the potential impacts from mechanical equipment noise, existing traffic noise from North Fremont Street due to the removal of the existing hotel and parking lot noise. That noise did conclude that the noise levels associated with the project would be below the city standard and not constitute a significant impact that requires mitigation. They also did recommend design elements, specifically the screening wall and additional construction mitigations to the already mitigated construction noise impact to further limit noise to neighbors. And I just wanted to show this graphic. You can see on the left-hand side, there's the proposed screening wall, which also not only serves to screen the development from the neighbors, but does protect them from any sort of noise from North Fremont Street.
Chris, I have a question. This is Hansen. What is the applicant's requirement to provide noise mitigation for street noise that it has no control over? Right? So is, where, where is that requirement that they need to protect another property from North Fremont's street noise?
That's, that's a very good question. I defer to Kim on that question. It is complicated.
Yeah, I think we actually struggled with this concept during the project review. And we ultimately looked at removal of the existing building, and is that changing the environment? And that's why the supplemental noise report was required, which concludes there's no significant impact on noise. It does recommend as extra, just as an extra effort to, for the wall installation along that property line. We also have our legal counsel online, Adam Lindgren, if you want additional legal perspective on that.
I mean, eventually I would. I mean, I just, I, I mean, otherwise then you're not just worrying about any project. You're worrying about things that are completely out of your control. You know, what, what, what impact does the airport have, airport and airport noise have now that there's a different building there? What, you know, the highway? What, I mean, there's so many different things that one has to consider then, that I just, it seems, again, I'll, I'll, those are, that's the question. There you go. I'm stopped. I won't.
Okay. Well, we will move on. So there were, were other comments regarding the VAF, the VAF zone charter and the applicability of the North Fremont specific plan, comments from the, the public in addition to the commission. And staff has maintained that the charter and VAF zone standards apply to this proper, this project, and that includes the parking ordinance within the zoning ordinance. The specific plan policies do not apply. There has not been a charter amendment brought forward which would allow the policies within that document to be applied to this project. The administrative record shows the council was aware that a charter amendment would be necessary to apply those standards when the specific plan was adopted. Just repeating myself. So additionally, there were requests by neighbors, the neighbors to the north, the Maroon family, to have story poles required for this use permit application as part of the noticing. The neighbors do reference the architectural review noticing procedures in the zoning ordinance, while the use permit noticing procedures actually do not have this requirement. We did talk with the building official who determined the story, that story poles installed for this project would be unsafe. And so staff, as a courtesy, posted illustrative means of noticing in the form of the six project renderings in three locations at the project site. Neighbors from the, the neighborhood north, as well as representatives from the neighborhood associations nearby, also commented that parking and loading at the site would be inadequate, stating that forty-two spaces would not be enough for the forty-two-room hotel, that one additional parking space should be required, and that a loading space should be required. The staff response is that forty-two spaces are required for the forty-two-room hotel. The requirement is one space per room and two additional spaces per fifty rooms. There are forty-two rooms proposed, so the two additional are not required. And then I will show on the following slide, the applicant did provide one loading space. And you can see that here. I've used the, the red hash to, to highlight it. It is a ten-by-twenty-three-foot, one-inch-by-ten-foot loading space. Those, that's a non-conforming dimension. They're typically larger. But the applicant has requested to only have this space. So moving on to the findings for the loading space. Monterey City Code thirty-eight dash one-seventeen, titled, section titled, "Reduce Parking Requirements" Allows Planning Commission to Approve Less Than Standard Number of Parking and/or Loading Spaces. This was a process that has been used in the past by the Planning Commission. I'm sure you're very familiar. The, earlier this year, the Planning Commission allowed the reduction of, I think, over thirty spaces down to four spaces for a local yoga studio. But in this case, in order to prove the proposed reduction of the, of conforming loading spaces from two to zero, and we write two to zero because the one that is proposed does not conform to the typical standard size that is required for hotels, the Planning Commission must make two of three findings, finding A and finding B or C.
Chris, I have a question.
Yes.
What is the size of a loading space that?
You know, I, I have it in my staff report, which I don't have in front of me. I believe it's, it's twenty-four length, fourteen-foot height, and I think twelve feet wide. So it, this one is, is certainly smaller, but they do intend to have one that is large enough for the types of trucks that they anticipate for delivery.
Thank you.
So starting with that, that first loading space finding, the parking demand will be less than the requirement in Schedule A or B. Schedule A and B are in the zoning, the parking ordinance, and they basically, Schedule A dictates how many parking spaces are required, while B dictates how many loading spaces are required. So they provided correspondence from the hotel brand owner, IHG Intercontinental Hotel Group, that large or frequent deliveries for a select service hotel such as this project are not anticipated. Deliveries would be limited to pre-packed foods and snacks and other sundries. They anticipate UPS or FedEx-type deliveries, which don't typically have the large freight-style semi, semi vehicles. And the loading zones for various other hotels they've developed or have been approved for in California, they typically waive or do not require loading zones because they don't anticipate these types, you know, large and frequent deliveries. Finding B, the probable long-term occupancy of the building or structure based on its design will not generate additional parking demand. The applicant provided correspondence stating that the floor plan was designed for a limited-service hotel. There are no other uses that would generate additional parking demand. These are uses such as restaurants, bars, events venues, or retail spaces. And then if they do intend to do any sort of new use or building modifications in the future that would require additional parking or loading, staff would, would catch that in review and require those, those spaces. And I haven't included finding C. It's the way that this section works. It's either B or C, and there just was evidence for finding C to support it. So staff's recommendation is based on finding A and B. So moving on to the use permit findings, which the, the Planning Commission, I think, is very familiar with.
Chris?
Yes.
Go back to that point a little bit. You said that the state of California is, is not counting, or are there waiving loading spaces?
No, I, sorry if that was confusing. So what, what the applicant, the information that the applicant provided was that other hotels that are similar to this one, limited-service hotels that they've received entitlements and approvals for, they did not, they were not required to provide loading zones or had that requirement waived based on the anticipation that there would not be frequent. based on the anticipation that there would not be frequent delivery of, of goods like refrigerated trucks or, you know, trucks that might be delivering things for events, et cetera. So it's not in the state. It was just various cities in the state of California that they received approval for.
And so this loading zone would not include people unloading luggage to go into the hotel?
No, the intent of, of, of the loading zone requirement in the city code is, it, it appears to be more for operational purposes. So loading, loading and unloading as related to, for, for deliveries for the hotel.
Yeah. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah. So finding, no, use permit, finding number one, that the proposed use is in accord with the objectives of this chapter and the purposes of the zone. The proposal meets the requirements of the charter and the VA of zone in terms of the number of guest rooms, the, the number of stories, required parking, including the findings that would allow the reduction in parking, lot coverage, required setbacks and overall sighting. And the project is not subject to the policies of the North Fremont specific plan.
Chris, do we have to make that finding that it's not subject to, or is it just not, I mean, is that a finding we have to make for the use permit?
It is a, it is a finding that staff has made. I, I, I think that staff is recommending the, the commission make that finding.
Okay.
The second use permit finding is that the proposed use and the proposed conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will be consistent with the general plan, will not be detrimental to the public safety or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood of such use, and will not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity or to the general welfare of the city. And that response, the staff response, is that the project is consistent with the general plan and surrounding development. It has a commercial land use designation and the, and the proposed use supports that designation. The economic element policies in the general plan encourage added hotel rooms to increase transient occupancy tax revenues and encourage, and it, the general plan states that hotel owners should be encouraged to upgrade their facilities. And lastly, that the project will not be detrimental to public health, safety or welfare. And that is because there, this project is a substantial upgrade from the current condition. There is an increased separation between the adjacent residential uses as compared to the current hotel. The, it will be landscaped. There will be a landscaped area and, and screen wall that separates the uses. And that will protect privacy aesthetics and noise, in fact, noise-related impacts. And then the loading space is adequate for a select service hotel. And then lastly, the, the third finding is that the proposed use will comply with any specific condition required for that use. The applicant will comply with all conditions and mitigations required for the project. And then staff has also recommended a condition that the applicant grants a, a public easement to the city for pedestrian sidewalk use along Casover. So that concludes my presentation. Again, the recommendation is to adopt both of these resolutions. I did mention I do have other slides, including elevations, floor plans. If, if we have any other questions, I can certainly pull those up. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also here as well, and I believe they do have a presentation to give.
Any questions for Chris?
Yes.
Okay, let's start with you, Steve.
All right, Stephen Miller. Chris, some, some homework. Page four, the first full paragraph. You have, say, should use alternative fuels. Page twenty-one, paragraph hash mark three. The entire paragraph, you talk about should and could. If you want them to be enforceable, you have to change them from should and could to shall. That's just, you know, homework. But the other one I'm concerned about is on the loading zone. Well, no, on noise that Hanson mentioned. Will the noise as a result of this project being built, not the construction noise, but the permanent noise, be the greater, lesser, or the about the same as the existing the noise from the existing use? Do we have any information on that?
Yeah, it's, it's my under, well, what, what I do understand is that the, the noise would be similar to, to what the existing use is. It would be less than the city's threshold requirements, and it would be very much similar to current condition.
But as far as specific decibels, we don't have that.
I think in the staff report, it was, it sounds that it was slightly up like two or three decibels higher than what it currently is, something like, I mean, that's the best.
But it's still within the permissible.
But yeah, but it's less than the threshold from the city. Yeah.
Still within the permissible range, though, right?
Yes.
Well, I addressed it to my comment to Chris.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
You have a question?
I do, or I'm late.
Um, so I, were you able to hear the beginning of the presentation from your house? Okay, so you heard the full presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a few questions. The, the wall on, I think, north side of the project between Maroon and the proposed hotel. Is there a maximum height that's allowed on that wall?
No.
It could be thirty feet high. It's, there's no zoning maximum to that height.
Correct. There, there are a few different zones in, in the city that do have maximum requirements. The VA known as, is not one of them. It is subject to ARC review, however.
Okay. And the, on, on page twenty-five of the report, down just three paragraphs above the photograph. Says the city traffic engineer has the discretion to allow parking spaces and drive aisles less than the standard and has approved the proposed parking lot layout. Can you, which, what, which numbers are being affected by that statement?
Yeah, so typically, the standard parking space size is nine by twelve. The traffic engineer can allow compact spaces. There are a couple of spaces here. And then in addition, the, the typical drive aisle width or a ninety-degree aisle where, where the spaces are perpendicular to the aisle is, is twenty-five feet, and I believe that one of the sides is, is at twenty-four on the southeast side.
And, and I think you misstated, you said nine by twelve, I think, nine.
Nine by eighteen, did I say twelve? I apologize.
Yeah, nine by eighteen, okay. That's all I have right now. Thanks.
And I'll, I'll just clarify that the traffic engineer does not have the discretion to reduce the total number of spaces, so they have not done that here. It's just the configuration of spaces and, and the lot aisle.
Okay. Dan?
No, I'm good.
Have a question?
No.
Mike? Mike Dawson, do you have a question?
I, I don't have a question, but I have a, I have a bunch of, of typos, but, but I think that can wait till.
Okay. Mike Brassfield.
Yeah, I, I have a, a couple of questions. I understand that there's a conflict between North Fremont specific plan and the idea of hotels. But one of the things that staff spent a lot of time on in crafting that specific plan. And we had at the time, a planning commissioner who spent a lot of time making illustrations of what the people wanted to see. And those visions were shared at community meetings and other places. Because people wanted to see some uniformity. But now we have a separate standard for a hotel versus what maybe put in next, next door as part of a neighborhood vision of what they wanted to see. And I was, I was grilled on this by at least two people. Because during that specific plan, and even what to what we've been seeing recently, those visions are not introduced as a place to start when we ask for, what do we want it to look like? So now we have a conflict between visitor accommodation and the specific plan as to what the neighborhood is supposed to look like. How can we resolve that?
Take the North's specific plan to, a vote to the people, and if it gets approved, it will control. That's, I mean, that's the answer.
But that's not what I'm talking about, Hanson. The, what the issue is, is that we can put these adjoining buildings together, and we're supposed to ignore the vision plan for the neighborhood? I don't know. Because that's what it appears to be happening here, is that the design that's coming in doesn't pay attention to what anything else is supposed to look like.
Kim, would you like to, this is Adam Lindgren, uh, uh, counsel. Would you like to address the question, Kim, or shall I?
Uh, please respond, Adam. Kim had to step out of the meeting.
Sure. So the, the, from a, the commissioner's comments are, are not incorrect, but the, the charter controls and the charter hasn't been changed. And it was clear that at the time that the council adopted the specific plan from the record that you've presented to you, they, as the body that approved that specific plan, knew and understood that. They knew that the charter was controlling and would remain controlling even after they adopted this specific plan. So the, the answer is, if the council to, to ultimately harmonize the specific plan with the charter, the council could elect in its own discretion to place a matter before the voters that would make that adjustment to the charter. But until it does that, the charter controls.
Thank you. That, that's exactly what I've been thinking. But we have the, a vision problem here, and it's not, it's not just the, the VAF. I mean, a lot of people complained about the, the results of a previous project, that it didn't conform to the, the amount of time that the, the public was getting involved with making that vision statement. And if we're being, if the, the people are being ignored because we haven't got a resolution, when it's not even taken into consideration in any, we're going to run into more brick walls than we can build here.
But I get, to, to follow up, not with a legal comment, but just with a practical one. In all likelihood, more people voted in favor of the charter amendment than participated in the public conversations about the adoption of the specific plan. That is to say that the voters, the voters spoke, and until, until a ballot measure is presented to them, that, that remains controlling.
I, I fully understand that, but we're talking about a twenty-year space and vision. And, and the voters aren't even the same people in a lot of cases. So I, yeah, I understand all that, but I'm just pointing out that we're running into a slippery slope here. Anyway, thank you. That answered my question. I will make one other question for Chris. In the resolutions as submitted, it talks about story polls and the planning commission. And I believe that the last meeting, maybe it was the last meeting that we asked the question, what alternatives can we have if there's no story polls? Maybe balloons, something. But with the city's policy of no story polls, we're running into the public, it makes a request for them, but we're standing on this opinion that we can't do it. So is there any alternative? Because it, it, the statement in the resolution kind of suggests that the planning commission goes along with that, and I, I'm sorry, but I don't know if I have a firm answer on the idea of we don't need story polls. And I don't know if, if that reflects what the whole commission said.
I guess I would just like to say, Commissioner Brassfield, is the municipal code does not require story, story polls for use permits. So that's the city's law. Number two, the applicant has provided renderings of the project, and we showed those in the presentation tonight that are beyond our minimal, minimum submittal requirements for sites. We did talk to the building official about at the architectural review committee stage, will story polls or can they be installed? And her determination was no because of the potential of them falling. You know, thirty-five-foot-plus poles adjacent to a heavily traveled roadway is a dangerous situation. We've consistently held this position. I'm thinking back to Two Thirty Lighthouse and other situations. We also looked at the concept of balloons. Balloons extending thirty-five feet in the air adjacent to an airport flight zone is not a safe situation as well. Whether or not those balloons, you know, they'll be subject to wind, and we think about the wind event just yesterday. They could either go down into traffic and cause complications there, or they could become unhooked and potentially interfere with airport travel. The city building official is determined that it's unsafe to have poles or this types of representation. Instead, we did provide, or the applicant provided renderings of the project.
Thank you, Kim. But that was a specific question asked by the public, and I don't think that we had a complete answer, so thank you.
Okay. Would, are there any other questions?
Oh, I have one more. Just when you were explaining the parking, that was forty-two places, spaces, and then there was the loading area. Is that an additional space to the forty-two?
Yeah.
Yes, so that it's a completely separate space.
So it's actually forty-two plus?
It's, it's forty-two parking spaces and, and one loading zone space.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, and maybe this isn't the time for it, but I'll just ask it anyway. We received a public comment very late in the game talking about a noise control barrier recommended by Salter, whoever Salter is. And then we talk about the proposed retaining wall in between the parking lot and the apartment next door, the retaining wall being five feet tall with a seven-foot screening wall above. I don't think they're the same thing. The noise control barrier, would this be something during construction to keep the noise down from the adjacent properties? Well, do you have an opinion on that? And this is not from your notes, Chris. This is from the letter that was submitted at the last minute from Edward Pack Associates.
Yes, thank you, Chair Freeman. The, that report was provided this, this evening and is from the adjacent property owners, the Maroons, who owns the apartment building. Their team regarding the noise issue, and that, the noise consultant is recommending a fifteen-foot wall from the Maroon's side. That can obviously be considered whether or not the applicant is agreeable despite the, you know, despite not providing actual noise numbers, but, you know, maybe they're willing to agree to a fifteen-foot wall. It's an awfully tall wall. We may want to work, have the architecture. It's an awfully tall wall. We may want to work, have the architectural review committee work on. You know, something decorative on the wall that could provide, um, some interest. Um, but it could be a way to possibly address an issue between the two property owners. If the adjacent property owner wants a 15-foot wall. That would be, I think they existed, the proposed wall is seven feet on top of the retaining wall. So we're talking about another eight feet.
So the noise control barrier he's referring to is this dividing line between the two properties. Well, take a look at this room. The Wayne's coat is five feet tall. The room is probably 12 feet tall. That's probably the total height that is recommended for the separating noise barrier. Um, and that's only three feet short of what this guy is recommending. I just wondered if there was another noise control barrier during construction that he was referring to.
I, I think I did read something in the letter as well as they're looking for a temporary noise control barrier during construction. That might be able to be achieved a couple different ways. Number one, if it is a 15-foot wall, maybe that's. The part of the construction that happens first. They grade the site, they put that wall in, install it, and that's the temporary noise wall. I'm not familiar with other types of temporary noise walls during construction. Perhaps the architects on the panel are aware of those, but I'm not.
Well, I've seen protective walls at, at construction sites and normally they're limited to the height of the first floor, so. Anyway, that is not a question for you. If there are no further questions from the commission.
Well, I do.
Oh, good. Okay.
Follow up with your question then.
Yeah.
Kim, the, um, so there, there is on page 11 of the use permit conditions. I'm not sure what package page that is.
Sure, I'll find it.
It's condition 12.
You want to read it out, Terry?
Sure. The proposed screening wall shall be constructed with the following minimum properties. Continuous from grade up to a specific height. Free of cracks and gaps, constructed of materials with minimum surface density of free PSF. So I'm just not, what is that? Am I misreading that or what, what is that condition 12 about? Is that?
The, the, those were recommendations by the applicant's noise consultant to mitigate. To ensure that the, the, the screening wall would, uh, appropriately mitigate ambient traffic noise.
Okay, so that condition 12, that is in the, it's in our use permit conditions, you know, it's, it's a draft. Set of conditions, but that condition 12 is the noise barrier.
Right, it's essentially saying that this, this wall that the applicant has proposed is up to the correct specs to appropriately. Uh, limit the amount of ambient noise coming from North Fremont Street.
Okay, so really that condition 12, we probably might need to tighten that up as far as if we're gonna be telling the ARC. And if we're, if we're giving it to the ARC is one of their tasks, I guess.
Well, there's been a recommended spec on that wall. Having to do anything beyond that.
Well, I don't, does it have, you know, I guess it has a height. You'd think that our condition would be inclusive in itself.
So when I look at that and the images that you showed earlier, you had several section cuts that include. A fence sitting on top of retaining wall and the most extreme one was a five-foot retaining wall and seven-foot fence. 12 feet tall, so you gotta go another three feet if the applicant agrees to do that. And it also, in your rendering shows those walls planted. That something has grown up over them and gotten quite bushy. And so when I look at that, I'm, I'm taking that as an indication of what the intent of the wall. Design is going to be ultimately, it's going to be covered up with planting. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. So the, the hedges that you, you saw on the rendering are proposed as a, as a landscaping screen. Uh, in the planting easement area that's between the projects, the proposed project site and the, the neighboring multifamily structure.
Chris, can you bring up that? Um, and I just, I think this is an important point, just so we all understand it.
Okay, let me share.
Actually, can you go to the site plan? Yeah, there. So I think what we're looking at is the parking spaces. Directly behind the parking spaces will be this wall and then the five-foot landscape easement.
Share that with, can you share that on your screen? Cause we can't see it online.
I can see it. I can see it.
Really? Okay. Oh, there it is. Now I can see it. I have to move my screen around. Sorry, my, my hole. I have too many screens open.
So the benefit of the landscaping is really to the residential property. There will be five feet of landscaping between the residential property and the wall. And then there will be the wall. And what I was referring to. Is, you know, that wall is going to be about seven feet and if, and it would be even potentially taller with the. Adjacent property owner's recommendation that it be increased in height, that the finish of that wall. Should probably be something interesting to look at. I mean, it would be nice versus just blank seven-foot wall.
Right.
That the architectural review committee could ultimately. I don't know, there's all sorts of design type things you might be able to do to make that more interesting. So that was, that's what I was trying to describe.
But condition 12 is about the temporary noise wall. Is that right?
No.
Oh, it isn't?
It is for the screening, screening wall.
Yeah. The first time the temporary noise wall is brought up is in the letter we received tonight at six o'clock.
Okay.
That is from, um, Edward Pack and he's talking about, um, a wall during construction.
Yeah, I saw that.
So.
But, but my question is that. I mean, to read condition 12, especially with the three PSF. That's, that looks like sound.
Correct, correct. So.
Okay, right.
The applicant's noise consultant, even though the project didn't violate the noise standards. Said, you know what, it doesn't hurt to put additional noise mitigation within that wall. And so they provided that specification.
Okay.
And I'll just sort of to go above and beyond to try to address the issue. Now, the letter from Mr. Pack says that wall should even be taller, probably with the same specifications.
Right, right. And do you think that, uh, condition 12 should be, uh, should mention the ARC? Or is there going to be a separate list for them or is it just the normal? You know, landscaping, lighting and such that they're going to deal with?
So if the commission feels there's specific issues the architectural review committee should look at. I recommend that you put it into the condition of the, uh, condition of approval. We just did that recently with the, um, new gymnasium that's being built for the San Carlos Church. They really spent a lot of time looking at a couple issues you recommended. Number one was the lighting and nighttime lighting. So they spent time looking at the Kelvin temperatures. And they also looked at, um, the size of the plantings. So sometimes the planning commission, based on your knowledge, will say, architectural review committee, please make sure. To look at the following issues, reach your own conclusion, but you know, consider them.
Yes, okay. Terry, didn't you also mention plants growing up on that wall?
It's shown that way in the rendering.
Yeah.
That was a comment. Okay, because if we're talking about putting some kind of design on it, that would be. That would go against the idea of having plants on that wall. Something like climbing fig that would actually adhere and grow up with the wall.
Okay.
Well, I think we can move on to, uh. Put that down as a, uh, as a detail issue that really needs to be described completely.
We can discuss it later.
Right, exactly.
One other question that concerns ARC. So, um, the, the whole idea, uh, it, it's funny how the, the zoning ordinance doesn't require. Story polls for, for planning commission. It's really specifically for ARC. But the, the ironic thing is though, the once the planning commission determines the height of a building. ARC is going to ask for staking on a structure that's already been determined, the height. It's, it's a little bit backwards. I just wanted to point that out. Of, you know, I don't know what, uh, what you can comment about that.
I guess my only comment in.
Talking by a guy who's.
Is if the city wants to change its requirement, we can for use permits. Um, but second of all, even for architectural review committee, this project is not going to be allowed to be staked. It's not safe to have 35-foot poles.
Yes, so either way, it's the same.
It's not going to happen. It's the same outcome.
It's the same.
With this site.
Okay.
Not with all sites.
To your point, Kim. We could easily generate some kind of a. Not necessarily a rule, but a habit that. For commercial buildings, story polls are not going to be used for residential buildings. They are, because in the past mostly story polls have been used for residential buildings. And, uh, the, the case in point, 290 Lighthouse Avenue showed that. Very, very difficult to do story polls for a commercial building. So. There could be some general guidance there from the city. Are there any other questions for Chris? He, he's answered a lot. Yeah. All right, then let's move on, uh, and. Would the applicant like to make presentation? And introduce yourself if you would. Hi, Anthony.
Can't hear him. Oh, there we go. Is that better?
Not better.
Or maybe worse. I don't know which. Evening, Anthony Lombardo on behalf of the applicant. Um, I'll go through a few of the items, a response to a few of the items. And then I have a comment about the letter we received this evening. Uh, regarding additional noise mitigation. So. Uh, we talked earlier, you talked earlier about how does the North Fremont specific plan relate to the VAF zoning district? And Commissioner Brassfield mentioned that, you know, during the adoption process for the specific plan, there was. Um, a lot of, some public input regarding, uh, consistency and design themes. And things for the North Fremont area. Um, unfortunately, I guess, uh, or it doesn't appear that perhaps that was understood at the time that. This specific plan does not and cannot, as Mr. Lindgren will confirm, I'm sure if you ask him. Override the provisions of the initiative that established the VAF district. So my first slide. Shows the excerpt from the city staff report. When the North Fremont specific plan was adopted and highlighted in that slide, you'll see. Is a statement in the staff report that says, because the VAF designated properties are controlled by the charter. Any amendments require a vote of the citizens. No changes are proposed, the locations of the VAS zoning properties. So in other words, it was acknowledged from the adoption that. Of the North Fremont specific plan that it didn't apply to the VAF properties. Next slide, please. The ordinance adopting the North Fremont specific plan contains the same acknowledgement. Whereas the visitor accommodation facility designations are controlled by the charter. Requires vote of the citizens, no changes are proposed. Next slide, please. From ordinance 3499, which was the ordinance establishing the zoning. For the North Fremont specific plan area, there's an exhibit. And if we go to the next slide, you'll see that the exhibit is blacked out for all of the VAF properties. Uh, that are not subject to the standards of the North Fremont specific plan. Uh, next slide, please. The, I won't bore you with the, the legal details, but suffice it to say. And I think Mr. Lindgren agrees with me on this, that the only way that can be changed, I think Kim said it earlier, is by putting. A vote, citizens of the entirety of Monterey to a change the VAF zoning district to incorporate the North Fremont specific plan. So that hasn't happened and of course the applicant. Designed this project consistent with the VAF zoning district standards. In the charter, which are those that apply to this project, not the North Fremont specific plan. There was a lot of debate by the lawyer representing the, uh, next door neighbor early on. That hasn't been brought up lately, but I think, I don't think there's any question of a matter of law. Uh, the North Fremont specific plan doesn't apply. So, uh. That relates to several items. One, the North Fremont specific plan has a certain height limit set forth in it. That doesn't apply here because the standards of the VAF apply, which don't contain a specific height limit. Next slide, please. Uh, parking standard, again, the VAF zoning district has different parking standards. And those are, as we discussed earlier, one per guest room. And so that's 42 and that's what we have on the project. Uh, the loading zone requirement, uh, is flexible, if you will. Uh, and allows the, the city to determine whether loading zones are necessary. And when I say loading zone, I'm talking about something that a semi truck would pull and park in, which would be completely disruptive. I would say almost virtually impossible to accommodate on this site. The loading, we are providing a small look parking, uh, parking space, which will be used as a loading zone for the type of vehicles. That come to this type of hotel, which are not, is, which are not the, this is not the type of hotel. Where you bring large semi trucks in, it's like this. So the, the, the brand, the, the flag for the hotel, the avid hotels. Uh, stated that they don't use loading zones because these are limited service hotels that don't have banquet facilities. Conference facilities, et cetera. Here's examples of, uh, hotels that Chris mentioned earlier. Uh, where they were not required or the loading spaces were waived because they called them select service hotels. Meaning there're no, no restaurant, no banquet, no convention. A couple of three, four examples here of Hampton Inn's Home Two Suites. I don't know what that, I've never heard of that one before. Another Hampton Inn and a Hyatt property. Next slide, please. Uh, noise is basically the remaining issue. I will say, we, we were, Kim was kind enough to forward the letter as soon as she received it. We had our noise expert look at it and the client and the architect reviewed it. And I'm pleased to say that I think we can agree to everything in the letter. There's one comment in there that. It doesn't make a lot of sense about reviewing the windows in the apartment building next door. The, the purpose of the wall is to block the noise. So there effectively is no noticeable difference in the amount of the noise. So in your general plan, uh, standards, you have general plan standards for noise. And in the multifamily, uh, zoning district, it's CNEL. Which is a way of measuring noise over a 24-hour period of the average of, of 65 decibels. So, um, the noise study that we prepared, uh, says that the, the conclusion is here on the screen. Noise levels are expected to stay below the city standard, which is the normally acceptable standard in the city's land use plan. Next slide, Chris. It's a little hard to read. Hopefully in the staff report it comes out better. But if, if you look at the, the wall that was the seven-foot wall. There's basically no, no increase or imperceptible increases anywhere. The 15-foot wall, which we're happy to do, would of course reduce the noise penetration even farther. Next slide, Chris. The, uh, again, the, the, the standard from the city is 65, or sorry, 60. DBA, which is single event noise in the residential district next door. Uh, we don't cause that or don't allow that noise to go into the apartment building with the noise. Uh, wall in place. Next one. And this is a conclusion that with the, with the mitigating wall. Contain, and contained or incorporated into the design. And with the use of proper mechanical equipment during operation, otherwise you don't have loud things on the roof. Pretty standard type methods for sound mitigation, that there won't be any significant impact from noise. Next slide, Chris. Um, we talked about the story polls. Uh, unfortunately, I have to report, there's probably another good reason that the staff has said that story polls aren't appropriate. Because after Chris posted the notices, they were vandalized on the site and removed. And so. The thought of somebody doing something cute like cutting the guy wires and letting the poles fall onto the street. Or cutting the balloons so they fly up in the air is, unfortunately, appears to be a distinct possibility based on what happened to the notices. So, um, I think that further shows the wisdom of the staff and the building officials' position. shows the wisdom of the staff and the building officials' position that that's not appropriate. Notwithstanding the fact that the way the city code is written, it's not even required as as part of the planning commission process. It's required as a part of the ARC process. So and the architect has done great, you know, some very nice renderings of the of the site, which I think give a great comparison or great feeling for how it would be perceived on the ground. So as I mentioned, we reviewed the letter that came in this evening. All of the construction-related requests that they're making on our site, we're more than happy to do in answer to the question about the temporary wall. Our report does suggest that that a plywood temporary wall be erected during construction. But rather than do that, we were texting the architect that we would just do the the wall, the fifteen-foot wall, when we start. Instead of waiting till later, we'll we'll construct the fifteen-foot wall as soon as we remove the building enough, because unfortunately, the old building is right on the property line. So we have to demolish at least a good, or some portion of that building to get the the new wall in place. But we'll start with that wall, and that will provide the noise attenuation from the get-go for the property. So it appears that based on what staff has presented, the the letter we got this evening from the neighbor, that by incorporating the measures recommended by the noise consultant and with the changes recommended and the additional height of the wall recommended in the letter we received tonight, that addresses the issues. And so we, this is obviously a property that is badly in need of redevelopment. And this locate, this part, the commercial sector of North Fremont will benefit from this redevelopment, and hopefully, it'll be a catalyst to the further redevelopment of some properties on North Fremont. So the architect was ready to make a presentation about the design tonight. We can still do that if the commission has any questions or would like that. Otherwise, we're available for questions and and answers. Our noise consultant is on Zoom, on the Zoom as well, in case there's any technical questions. But the good news is, we can, we can build this. And as Commissioner Reed said, even though it's not something we created, the noise on Fremont Street, we can ensure that it isn't any noisier on the properties behind. And we can do that within the confines of our property and produce a beautiful hotel. This will be the first time that this hotel brand has been built in the state of California. So Monterey has a distinction of being the the first avid hotel to be built in California. So thank you. Let me know if you have any questions. Happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Do, does anybody have a question for Mr. Lombardo? Apparently not. Thank you very much. At this point, we can open up the topic to public comment. And Jennifer, if you'd like to read out how people can comment.
I would. Thank you. Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four, toll-free. And again, that is eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four. Then enter the webinar ID And again, To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. One more reminder, there is a three-minute time limit for today's public comments. And currently, I do see one hand raised. This is Henry. I'm allowing you to talk. Henry, Henry should have permission to unmute and speak.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
For the record.
My name's Henry Runke. I'm with Walt Runke and Dost Architects. And I appreciate the time to talk. I think one of the reasons why there's such concern about the project, particularly with the neighbors to the north, is the the VAF zone and the Fremont plan, although there's the determination that the that the two are different and distinct. I think there's always been the anticipation that there should be some reasonable amount of height for structures throughout the city, including ones that are hospitality-related. And the reality is that when you read the VAF zone, there is no height limit. It could be as many floors as you can conceive. It also has no limitation on the size of a hotel room. So when it talks about the number of units, it doesn't actually limit the size. So if I wanted to take this lot and put a ten-story building with two-thousand-foot units, four per floor, I could do that. And I don't think that there's anything that would prohibit me as far as a zoning standpoint, because there is no height limit. I could still be able to park forty cars. I could do a lot of things. So I think that's one of the big issues that we have is the whole limitation on the, or reliance on the VAF zone. For situations like this, it really don't apply. When you look at the VAF zone, and you look at the thirty-five feet, yeah, it's thirty-five feet on Fremont, but we are getting to forty-five feet as you traverse down the site and you face the adjoining property. And that's getting kind of high. Now, what could alleviate that would be the story poles staking. And one of the things that we were looking at was if you can't put up story poles, for whatever reason, you should at least do a simulation, a photo simulation. And that's what we did at two-thirty Lighthouse. And we actually took photographs and then inserted the building so you could see the building. And that wasn't asked for here. If you look at the photo simulations, they're actually computer-generated, not only the buildings, but also the backgrounds. And so you really don't know what the building's going to look like. So, you know, at least staff should be asking for some level of photo simulation. And then if you look at the site, there's things that you don't see in the 3D images. We have a sidewalk on Cassavertie that's very narrow. There's utility poles. All of that is very close to the building. It would be interesting to see how that works. So I guess, in summary, my three minutes are up, but I I think that that the applicant should take a look at ways to minimize the height. And I think that the parking is also an issue that needs to be addressed. I don't think that the forty-two spaces will actually adequately park a building of this scale. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Henry. Do you see any others?
Not currently. Oh, there is, I'm sorry.
Reset it, Jennifer.
There is one person who is raising their hand right now, Mr. Derek Oliver. Mr. Oliver, if you could unmute and and provide your public comment now is a good time.
Good evening, commissioners and planning staff. My name is Derek Oliver, counsel for the Marum family, the owner of the adjacent apartment building to the north. As as I've laid out in in multiple letters, and I don't intend to repeat, all those arguments here would be impossible for this complicated project to do so, especially within three minutes. But as currently proposed, the project violates the Monterey City Code and/or SEQA as to parking noise and as to notice. I appreciate Mr. Lombardo's assertion that the applicant has reviewed the the latest letter. And we apologize for coming in tonight. That was the only time that our expert was able to take a look at that and get anything done was today. However, the fifteen-foot construction wall is only one element of that. As he points out, in his standard list of noise mitigations for construction noise, he's got twenty-five to thirty-five items listed. And the applicant's noise expert only set forth about a half a dozen or so. So there's lots of room to go. And in the opinion of our noise expert, Mr. Pak, his conclusion is that as currently mitigated and proposed, the construction noise will not be reduced by those mitigations to a less than significant level, which means that the mitigated net, mitigated neg deck cannot be supported. As to the NFSP, it was more than two and a half months ago that the commissioners required the lesson. We got it two days ago. I didn't see anything new in there, and I'm certainly not going to repeat the legal arguments that were set forth months ago. Unfortunately, this may be a case where we may need to agree to disagree and leave it to the legal system to adjudicate that matter. As far as story poles and the joint hearing is concerned, we recently requested a joint hearing be convened between the Architectural Review Committee and the Planning Commission as provided for in the city code for situations exactly like this one, where a use permit and an architectural review permit are both required so that both bodies can in concert review and have a more vigorous discussion and review of the project. Unfortunately, that that code section and that and that request seems to have been ignored at this point. As for story poles, I think we can, again, agree to disagree, because I understand that there are other story pole companies that can safely put up story poles in similar situations. And if we're worried about guy wires being cut, and if that's the basis not to approve, require story poles, then I have story poles as a requirement ever. That that just doesn't make sense. And and not providing notice, again, seems to err on the side of the applicant and not on the side of the neighborhood. As for parking, the the code section is clear. Forty-three parking spaces are required. It's forty-two plus one for every fifty. If staff's interpretation were to be correct, the the code section would simply say an additional parking space is required for seventy-five rooms. Well, it doesn't say that. It says for every fifty, and if there's a fraction, and the fraction is more than half, which is the case here, forty-two is more than half of fifty, then one additional space shall be required. In addition to that, there's nothing here provided for employee parking. And I think the commissioner has well articulated the traffic shortage concerns in the neighborhood. And to allow shortcuts to be made on parking in an already difficult parking neighborhood would exacerbate, not alleviate, these problems. And and it is well within the commission's province to recognize that and not allow, in the name of city discretion, to reduce those parking requirements. And I think I've talked about noise a little bit. And I again apologize for that, for the late submission, but there are many more mitigation elements that should be required. Otherwise, noise will still not be reduced to less than significant, which which would certainly be a secret problem. So at this point, I would request that the project be denied as proposed, or to continue the hearing in order to convene a joint hearing between the Planning Commission and the Architectural Review Committee, and then direct staff to require compliance with the story poles requirement, require the applicant to submit an architectural review permit application, and require thirty-three parking spaces in two loading zone spaces, not just one. Because again, in practical terms, there are two parking spaces that are ADA, and you may very well have forty-two rooms occupied without anyone who is using those spaces. So you could have forty-two rooms booked using only forty spaces, which is still insufficient, and leaving no room for employees or anyone else, let alone during events such as the Jazz Festival and the fair and other concerts and things like that. And lastly, and I appreciate you giving me more time, construction hours. It's been requested many times to reduce the construction hours. And for whatever reason, that's not been done, nor has there been any explanation for why that's not been done. And I think those issues need to be addressed. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Anybody else? Jennifer?
I do. Next, we have Diane. I will give you permission to unmute yourself, and please state your full name for the record if you feel comfortable doing so.
Hi, this is Diane Marum, and I'm part of the family that owns the adjacent apartments north of the project. So I want to speak again to the construction noise. We have thirteen units, and most of them are young families with babies, and they cannot take construction seven days a week. We have requested that in the past. It's detrimental to their quality of life. It's very insensitive to our community, our community to have this much construction noise. I've never heard of the hours that are being proposed or the number of days being proposed. In the past, a few years ago, we have a motel building in front of us and behind us that never complied with the noise requirements and stopping and starting times. My phone calls fell on deaf ears. The city planners would talk to the contractor. The contractor would stop for a couple of days and then resume the longer hours. So I don't know if there are penalties or fines or something that can be designed, but we really need to reduce the number of days and number of hours that construction can take place, or we're going to have, you know, everyone will be moving out, and will the city reimburse us for all the rental income that we're going to be losing and the the devaluation of our property? I mean, these are considerations. These are serious, you know, nominal figures that we will be facing in losses. And regarding the parking issue, we've had to tow cars because neighbors and guests have parked in our parking lot. We've had to call the tow companies to come in the middle of the night. You know, besides the noise that they're causing for not living there, it's a very large disturbance. And you know, we've even, you know, been considering adding a security gate because you just can't keep towing cars. They just keep coming. So we feel like this project is not being sensitive to these issues that we are facing. And I think something can be done to meet in the middle, reducing the number of days, reducing the number of hours so that, you know, people can live in a neighboring community and not have to wear earphones or plugs. So that's pretty much my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane, for your comment. Will there be anybody else? Jennifer?
You do? I see Leila Marum also on the line. You are next up to provide public comment. You should have the ability to do so now.
Okay. So I'm also one of the co-owners of the apartment complex to the north. First, I wanted to address the building height. Once again, the surrounding buildings are one-story with, you know, only one or two that are two stories, but they're situated on larger lots with the building being set back quite a bit more. I do not believe the renderings accurately depict the enormity of of the building. There's no surroundings in those renderings. And they're eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sketches. And the putting story, comparing story pole vandalism to to sketches, I mean, it's not even reasonable. We, we've actually contacted story pole companies in California story poles. They they review the renderings. They feel they could put traditional story poles and the netting system in place safely. And there's also an alternate proposal they have to to put lists at each corner. there's also an alternate proposal they have to put lists at each corner of where the buildings are, and then put a flag line across each corner of those lists. And that would accurately depict the building size. And that's something that's needed, especially in this case, where you have an enormous building that's out of place from the surrounding areas. And I have the contact information and correspondence. I'd be happy to share that with you. So I urge the Planning Commission to at least do that. There's also safety concerns that were previous brought up with a narrow sidewalk on the Casa Verde Way adjacent to the hotel. This safety issue hasn't been addressed, and it's still a safety hazard with the sidewalk there. And then lastly, the fencing, although the plans were recently released in the short time I had to look at it, I didn't see more than a one-foot wall on the east side of the property between the hotel and our property. And on the driveway on Casa Verde Way, their driveway adjacent to our driveway, I didn't see any fence at all, which means their patrons or guests could walk directly onto our property. And we already have security issues with our property and unauthorized vehicles coming into our property. So that's a security hazard. So it looks like my time's up, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Marum. Thank you for your comment.
We do not see any more attendees with their hands raised in Zoom.
All right. If there are no further public comments, I want to remind everybody that we're here for only two things. One is the resolution regarding a mitigated negative declaration, and number two, a use permit. There have been many other issues raised, but those are the two things that we're here to discuss tonight. We've been here for an hour and a half. It's time for commissioner comments. Let's take a quick five-minute break, and then come back for comments and a vote.
Can we restore the screen, please?
And Madam Chair, this is Adam Lindgren, Legal Counsel. And might I respectfully request a 10-minute break so that staff has an opportunity to adequately consult on and prepare responses to the thoughtful comments that the commission received from the public?
Thank you, Adam. 10 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Restart our meeting, and the point of meeting now is Commissioner comments.
I have several.
Go.
Madam Chair, could we just make, excuse me, could we just make a brief conflict, actual procedural announcement? You'll note that Terry arrived a few moments late, and after talking with him on the break, the planning staff and I concluded that unfortunately, because he would not be able to definitively answer that he heard all of the deliberations here this evening, that he should not be further participating in the conclusions and deliberations going forward. So this isn't a financial conflict. We haven't asked him to step off the dais or turn off the meeting. But my understanding is that he agrees with that conclusion and will not be further participating in tonight's deliberations.
I apologize for being late. It couldn't be avoided, and I did miss part of Chris's presentation. So I will just recuse myself and not participate in the rest of the meeting.
Sorry to hear you go, bud.
Yeah.
So where was I?
You have.
Pardon me.
Page 30. It says NSFP instead of NFSP. It also does that on page 47. Page 33, end of the first paragraph, it says connections, the region, or communities, the region. I think communities of the region. Page 36, parking lot noise, I think it's parking lot traffic noise. And on 36 again, to further, to limit. I don't know how to unwind that one. And then page 47, there's the NFSP. Again, it should be NFSP instead of NSFP. And I'm sure that Sandy caught a few more.
Oh, she didn't.
I'm glad you didn't do the whole 100, 750 pages.
Well, I did.
150 pages. Dan, comments?
Wow. Well, I think, you know, you pointed out, we have two things to do here, which kind of simplifies the task at hand.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Fletcher, can you please speak up and make sure that your microphone is on?
It is on.
Okay.
But my computer screen was in front of it. I have some property, a couple blocks up the street where it's adjacent to a hotel, commercial property, multifamily residential. And, you know, as zones go, these types of zones match up, high-density residential transitioning to commercial. And, you know, in the property that I own, it's maybe 20 feet between the hotel and condominiums. And there are problems sometimes, but not all the time. I think this project that we're considering tonight goes a long ways towards mitigating the kinds of things that I have found to be annoying living next to a hotel. the kinds of things that I have found to be annoying living next to a hotel. I think the, the sound barrier, if it's done properly, is really quite nice. You know, with regards to the ridge poles. You know, I think I've heard about the explanation about three times as to why that's perhaps not a good idea. And, and I would agree. I think though, that the renderings would have been more appropriate as a photo representation. So that you could see the building in relationship to other buildings. But in general, I have to say, I don't see anything here that would prevent me from not supporting this project.
Okay. Mike, did you have another comment besides, you know, correcting? The narrative?
I think I'll agree with Dan about the story polls because we've run into this before. And, and there's one thing that, that, that I like about the city of Monterey is that they're safety conscious. If we have the, if we have a good possibility of dropping, dropping a thirty-five foot stake in the middle of North Fremont, that would be a bad deal. So I think if, if the building official says it's unsafe, you know, I'm going to salute and say, yes, it's unsafe. The. I'll just let that go.
Okay. Steve?
I think it's a good project and I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Hanson?
I have a few comments. So first off, I would like to, I mean, the, the, although I agree that the, the ren, not the renderings, but that if it was done differently, like the lighthouse project with pictures and, and maybe that's something for staff to consider in the future, that, that, that should become the policy versus just the computer generated ones. But that being said, I like the computer generated ones. There was many more angles that we really could see what it's going to look like. They, they, you know, they responded to all of our comments. Better views from North Fremont Street, from, from Casa, not Casa, what is it? Whatever the Casa Verde, that's Casa Verde. From Casa Verde, you know, I thought they did a good job with that. In terms of the VAF, so just to give, I will do a little bit more history on, on VAF. So back in the eighties, there was a plan to do very, a lot of hotels along the coast. I mean, a lot of hotels. The hotels in Monterey, just to give you everybody a, you know, a sense as to how many hotel rooms there are in the city of Monterey. There's over five thousand hotel rooms in the city of Monterey. That for a city of twenty-nine thousand plus people. This is all in the NIP handbook too. And so back then, there was a big worry about massive development in Canary Row and hotels and really destroying the historic nature of the city. And that's when citizens such as Clyde Roberson decided to change that. And that's how the VAF became into play. Just like if I own a piece of property and I want to put a hotel on it, the only way I can do that is to go to a vote of the people and get that zone VAF. Without that, I can't put a hotel on it. Just like they can't change the zoning in it. If you're a VAF, you're VAF. So that, that's just, you know, that's the way, that's the playing field we have today. If, if, you know, there is a, and Mike, I, I agree, there is a, there is friction between the North Fremont design and the VAF, but unfortunately, that's just the way it is. It's, you know, there are, if, if there's a plan to, or if there's somebody who has the ability or desire to push, you know, the specific plans to go through to cover VAF. Well, that, that's kind of the, the, the next step, if that's what people want. In terms of the loading zone, I'm in agreement that I think that there's only one. This is not a full service hotel. If you look and, and I, I didn't go back and look and I should have gone back and looked. But my, the recollection I have of all of the floor plans, there are no conference rooms. There's really no restaurant. There's no bar. There's nothing there. This is just an overnight hotel and people have come to expect to have some sort of small breakfast at every hotel you go to now. And that's just kind of, that's, it's a, you know, it's a limited service hotel. I don't, they do not need a massive loading zone in order to, to make this project work. Just a small, they're going to be, you know, small vehicles that are going to pull into this loading zone and, and, and unload whatever they're going to be serving there, or whatever they're going to be needing to, products and, and things like that. It already is and has been for years, a hotel with a three hundred, a hundred and thirty-four, I think that was the number seat restaurant. And I, I haven't been to Caruso Corners in a very, very long time, but there was also a bar there. That's my recollection. So you're, you're, you know, the, it is a very, very similar use in terms of the number of people, whether or not there was only eighteen hotel rooms. The total number of people going onto that property over the years has been the same. It probably will be less used now as a overnight hotel than it was as a very popular restaurant bar. And then also a, an eighteen room hotel. In terms of the other thing that I think we need to, you know, these type of projects don't come along too often for us. And we think that they are life shattering or changing projects. It is just a conversion from an eighteen hotel, eighteen room hotel with, with a restaurant, a hundred and thirty-four seat restaurant to forty-two room hotel. It is not building the Taj Mahal. It is not building a skyscraper. It is not changing the dynamic too much. I mean, it is, you're just going from A and A looks now a little bit different. That's all. I personally like the design. I like the colors on all of it, but I will defer to ARC. I know, Mike shaking your head. You know, but I would defer to ARC on, on all of that stuff because that is their purview. Our purview is making sure that the, you know, the, the negative deck is done right and then the, the use permit. So those are all my comments. I think it's a good project. It's something that will revitalize that part of, of North Fremont Street. I think, I mean, I think it really could be a catalyst. If it's done, hopefully it will be done well to that side, that part of, of North Fremont. So that's it. That, that's all I have to say. And I strongly support the project as submitted. And I think, I think the staff did a tremendous job to take us from point A to point Z all the way along. So thank you, Chris, for all your hard work on this.
Hanson, are you putting in, adding the letter regarding the wall?
Well, I didn't do a motion yet. So I, because not everybody had talked on this thing. So I didn't do a motion.
I have a couple of comments. Before you do your motion, I have a couple of comments. I think that Henry Rankin made a very good point that since this is in the VAF, that they could have built the hotel at any height. And so very reasonably, they have kept it at thirty-five feet, which is the same height limit as on the street side, as the commercial building limit. It is forty-five feet at the backside because a lot slopes down, but at street side, it's, it conforms with the future. I think that as a gesture to the maroons, we could reduce the construction hours to Monday, Friday and skip Saturday so that the families with small children could have a Saturday, Sunday. I think a policy for story polls at commercial buildings, now that we are increasing the height limit, should be agendized and brought to the planning commission. And my recommendation would be no story polls for commercial buildings, but story polls for residential. And like Hanson said, put in some policy for photographic renderings instead of, you know, you know, beautiful fuzzy romantic generated graphics, that type of thing. I think, oh, there was one other. Mr. Oliver suggested a joint meeting with ARC and frankly, I'm quite happy at the Division of Labor. If the planning commission is for a use permit and for mitigated negative declarations, great. And let the ARC decide, you know, whether to keep those tantrine towers or not. So with that, can we hear a motion on?
I'd like to make some comments.
Madam Chair, would you?
Oh, I forgot. How could I possibly have forgotten Mike Brassfield?
And if staff could also add one, one comment to the record before you take the motion, we would appreciate it.
Of course. Mike?
Well, first of all, I'm not against the project. One of the things that our neighborhood has hoped for is to get some new buildings that we could improve the image and the example of what needs to be done in North Fremont. One of my concerns has always been the interface between commercial and the properties that are private behind them.
Yes.
And I think that we've beat around this bush a lot because it's noise, it's visual. And we need to pay attention to this kind of interface. And so a lot of my comments were generated by that. The story poll, I understand the city's reason why. Photo imaging, the, the visions we saw, and by the way, seven hundred and fifty pages is a little long. To try to assimilate between Friday, because I, I hate to not read them and there might be a gem at seven hundred and forty-nine. So it, it just gets a little, my eyes start going crazy. But anyway. So I agree with a lot of the comments made. I'm a little concerned about the parking. Because our parking spaces along North Fremont are getting fewer and fewer. And if you try to drive down Casa Verde, you'll know there are no vacant parking places.
Right.
Because they have apartments there. So we haven't come up with a solution yet. I would agree that we probably need to maybe discuss things that we keep running into. Story poll issue, I agree that we probably need to talk about that. In general. I have some reservations, but I have to say I can support this project. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Mike. Adam, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We'd just like to briefly respond to a couple of the comments that Mr. Oliver made during his public testimony. And the, the one in particular is that with respect to the construction noise comments that you received this evening from Mr. Salter dated ten, ten twelve, today's date. Mr. Salter's comments on construction noise did not specifically indicate that without the adoption of the referenced twenty-five to thirty-five bullet points, that the construction noise would be significant and unmitigated. Rather than that portion of the letter, not only does it not have any list of what those specific measures would be, but it does say should, and it does say they are, that his project typically includes such a bullet list. So from our perspective, we do not see that as an actual piece of evidence that there would be a remaining significant construction noise impact, particularly after the other modifications that the applicant has proposed to accept here this evening.
If I could just add that Mr. Lundgren was referring to the PAC study, not, not the Salter study. The Salter study is, is the.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, excuse me. I appreciate the correction. Thank you very much.
So then I would make a motion to adopt a mitigated negative declaration for redevelopment of an existing eighteen guest room hotel, restaurant and parking lot site with a new forty-two guest room hotel parking lot and loading zone space in accordance with the findings and staff report and the findings that were at the meeting this evening.
A second?
That includes the letter regarding the wall?
This is the negative, the negative mitigated deck. That's not, that's for the use permit, right?
No, no, the.
Is it, is it for this one? Is it for this? Okay, that is the, then yeah, we include the wall, the letter with the wall for increasing the height to the wall to fifteen feet. Right? Is that what was the?
I believe so, yes. They would like it in both.
The applicant agreed to, so.
And the applicant has also agreed to the modified construction hours proposed in Mr. PAC's letter, which is eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, nine AM to four PM Saturday, and no operations, including deliveries on Sundays or holidays.
We'll include that.
And.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? All right, seeing none. Jennifer, you want to call for the vote, please?
Yes, Chair Freeman?
Approve.
Vice Chair Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Hi.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Milich?
Yes.
Thank you. And as a reminder, Commissioner Latassa is recusing. This motion passes with a vote of six and it is appealing, appealable to the planning office within ten days.
All right. And then the next motion?
I will make a motion to approve use permit UP twenty zero two two seven for development of an existing eighteen guest room hotel, restaurant and parking lot site with a new forty-two guest room hotel, parking lot and zoding, loading zone space pursuant to the findings in the staff report and in the resolution and as discussed and found today at the, this evening at the meeting.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? All right, Jennifer, you want to call for the roll?
Definitely. Chair Freeman?
Approve.
Vice Chair Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Milich?
Yes.
And again, Commissioner Latassa is recusing, which leaves this motion also passing with a vote of six. And it is also appealable to the planning office within ten days.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you. I thought that the comments again, from the public are not just interesting, but they actually add value to what is decided at the end. And I'm glad that there was some persistence there. The last item on the agenda is a planning office update.
In addition to my written report, I wanted to let the, know the commission know that on October nineteenth, City Council will be considering the draft accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So Chair Freeman, if you would like to attend and make any comments on behalf of the commission.
Shoot that date to me again, October nineteen?
October nineteenth.
City Council ADU. Oh my God.
In addition, I'm, I did receive an email from Commissioner Brassfield that requested a presentation on some of the recent legislation that was passed. Specifically, I know he's interested in SB nine, which would allow additional construction on single family zoned lots without any design review. And there's also a couple of other pieces of legis, legislation that I think would be helpful to update you on. So I'll try to do that at the next commission meeting.
But before the October nineteenth meeting, so.
No, it'll be after.
Be after.
It'll be on October because. It'll be on October because next Tuesday is October nineteenth. You'll be meeting on October twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And there's some pretty radical changes that are occurring.
Okay, I need to be a little better informed. All right. Any other comments? All right, the meeting is officially adjourned tonight, everyone. Good night.